I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, May 8, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Nishinabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Nishinabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the roll. Commissioner Asman is absent. Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Here.
Commissioner Winger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, we have a quorum, so we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. I have two proclamations to read. The first one is going to be for the Gamma Alpha Zeta Zeta Chapter. Is Colleen Green or Anne Hammond in the... Come on up. You guys want to stand over here? Whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated is an international community service-driven organization that was founded on January 16, 1920, in Washington, DC, on the campus of Howard University by five collegiate women. And whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated members are college-educated, community-service-driven, diverse, and professional women. And whereas, on January 28, 2018, six women of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated began the process of submitting a formal request to charter a new chapter in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. And whereas, the Gamma Alpha Zeta Zeta Chapter was chartered on February 24, 2018, in West Bloomfield, Michigan, by... SOR?
SOR.
SOR, Tanya Jenkins, Michigan State Director. And whereas, the Gamma Alpha Zeta Zeta is the first four-lettered chapter in the state of Michigan and is the first and only national Pan-Hellenic Council chapter in Mount Pleasant. And whereas, the professional and community-engagement-oriented women of Gamma Alpha Zeta Zeta have proven to be a dedicated community partner for the positive change that represents Mount Pleasant values at their best. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, on behalf of the Mount Pleasant City Commission and the citizens of Mount Pleasant, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Gamma Alpha Zeta Zeta Chapter for their commitment to bringing scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood to Central Michigan University and the City of Mount Pleasant community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on this 8th day of May, 2023. Thank you. And my next is a proclamation for Pride Month. And we have KT... Mandorka? Mandorka, okay. Whereas the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBTQ+ people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots, LGBTQ+ citizens rose and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, LGBT+ pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall Riots. And whereas, June is celebrated as LGBTQ+ Pride Month nationwide. And whereas, Great Lakes Bay Pride works to connect the LGBTQ+ and allied community to resources, education, networking opportunities, and advocates for LGBTQ+ rights in the Great Lakes Bay region and beyond. And whereas, our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of America's society. And whereas, recognizing the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Now therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Mount Pleasant and urge residents to celebrate with our members of the LGBTQ+ community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on this 8th day of June 2023. Woo! Thank you. Manager Dussens, can you please continue with the proclamations and presentations?
Absolutely. So next up, we have the presentation of the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Peter Hafner from Verdunfeld Hafner, which is the city's contracting auditing firm, will present the results of their work on the 2022 annual audit.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Peter Hafner. I represent Verdunfeld Hafner, the firm of independent certified public accountants that conducted the audit for the city for the year ended December 31, 2022. Prior to beginning on the audit, we met with a committee, which is referred to as an audit committee, and subsequent to the drafting of the financial statements, we met with the audit committee again. And I want to point out that the annual comprehensive financial report is the responsibility of management. It's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements within, based on our audit. I typically try to do this. I want to point out that your financial staff put this report together. And I believe we have three clients that actually prepare their own financial statements, have the ability to do so. So it's quite a project, quite an accomplishment. Your staff's very up on what are generally accepted accounting principles. They're not afraid to ask questions before we get here and during the audit process, and the audit process goes quite smoothly. Within the financial statements themselves, there are multiple sections. If you receive a copy of the paper version, they're all indexed on the right. So there's management's discussion and analysis, which precedes our opinion. Then we have the financial statements, required supplementary information, supplementary information, and then statistical information. And right up front in the report is the introduction, which is a letter from management discussing what's occurring in the city, lists the principal officials, things of that nature. Our opinion... I'm going to pull out my glasses here. Our opinion is on page 10 of the financial statements. I'm going to summarize it. It's approximately three pages long. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable, of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, the aggregate component units, as well as the aggregate remaining funds, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's a summarization of the second paragraph. That's what I would refer to as a clean opinion you're following. In our opinion, you're following the standards promulgated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, required to be followed per the state of Michigan, and that's the highest opinion you can receive. So following the opinion on pages... Page 26 is the statement of net position. And that's where we have a summary of your governmental activities, including all of your capital assets and all of your long-term liabilities, and your business-type activities. And that is a real consolidation of the multiple funds that you use throughout the year. So we're taking the governmental funds, putting them into eight columns, taking the business-type activities, water, sewer, putting those into a single column, and presenting them on the full accrual basis of accounting. So when we're looking at some of the slides, I'm going to say, this is that full accrual perspective, a business perspective, the accounting standard similar to what a business would follow throughout the year. Now, following the government-wide financial statements are the fund financial statements, and the governmental fund financial statements are on pages 28, 29, 30 through 39. And that is a presentation of the general fund, major, local streets, et cetera, et cetera, those governmental funds on the modified accrual basis of accounting. And that modified accrual basis of accounting is where we're looking at current assets, current liabilities versus all assets and all liabilities. So we're looking at things from the modified accrual basis of accounting. And when we talk about modified accrual basis of accounting, we'll talk about expenditures and fund balance, where in the front of the report, we're talking about net position, all assets less all liabilities. Following the governmental fund financial statements, on pages 42 through 53 are the proprietary fund financial statements. And that's where we see water, sewer, internal service fund operations. So I'm going to take you a walk through the financial statements in the form of these slides. So here is looking a full accrual perspective of where did the dollars come from in the current year. You can see, to a large extent, property taxes. Then we have state shared revenues, charges for services at 16.5%, grants, and interest and other. And what I always like to see personally is where property taxes and dollars that are within your control are the largest portion of the pie, which you see here, they're the largest slice. The next slide that we have, this is looking full accrual perspective, governmental activities. And we're looking at, to what extent are your general government, public safety, public works, highways, interest self-supporting, with either charges for services, operating grants, or capital grants? It's a fairly typical picture here, where the largest expenditure is public safety, and it's the largest component that isn't funded from charges for services, operating grants, or capital grants. Typically, it's picked up with property tax revenue or unrestricted revenue, such as state shared revenue. So very typical picture here. And if you take a look at it over time, we'd be better off looking at it from the fund perspective, which we will in a couple of slides. So that variance between those bars is made up by unrestricted revenue, property taxes, state shared revenue that's unrestricted, other revenues. The next picture we have is a look at full accrual, again, the net assets or net position of the governmental activities. We could see to what extent have you invested in capital assets, this building, the streets out, public works buildings, things of that nature, and to what extent is that net investment in capital being pushed down by depreciation expense each year. So you're putting in approximately the number of dollars that are being depreciated on an annual basis. So you can see that line's going straight across, replacing those items that are out there, and fighting with inflation, I'm sure, as others are. And you take a look at the green line, that's the restricted component. That could be state shared revenue in the form of Act 51, major and local street funding that's restricted for that purpose. And then we have the component that is unrestricted. And if we were to take a look back before 2050, and that line would have been positive. And that's when accounting standards required you to begin recording pension liabilities and other post-employment liabilities, which drove that line underneath zero. So big-picture perspective, the front statement's full accrual, and that's where I would suspect bond buyers are looking. Are you investing the dollars that you issue in debt in capital or operating dollars? And that would show you the picture. In Michigan, you can't typically issue bonds for operations, so... This is a picture of the modified accrual basis of accounting, and where are the dollars coming from? And general funds are your largest operating fund. You can see here, taxes, largest component, increased in the current year. There's medical marijuana tax in there. And there's also the merging of a capital projects fund with the general fund. So that brought that number up in the current year. Otherwise, you take a look at that, revenue sharing has increased slightly, and charges for services fairly stagnant. So that's the funding source for a large component of your operations. And here are where those dollars are going. Very typical picture. Once again, I see public safety increasing across the board. It's typically the largest component of expenditures. And then we see the other components, general government, that's just general operations, and then we have public works and transfers that are used to subsidize other fund operations, capital projects, things of that nature. So this information we just looked at comes off of pages 28 through 39 of your governmental fund financial statements. The next picture we have here is your general fund, fund balance, unassigned, over time as a percentage of expenditures. So you can see, in the current year, that component declined slightly, but you have assigned balances or committed balances for purchase of a firetruck and some other activities. So when you commit it, it actually knocks this down, which you still have the dollars awaiting that project you've just said we're going to set aside. The next picture we have is your general fund unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers, as it compares to other governmental entities that we work with. And if you take a look forward over from the right, that's the city. I'd say it's fairly clear that you're above average. And with the fourth line over, above average of all of those customers, we do have one small customer that is the giant line. They don't have a large operation. So having a million dollars could represent a couple years' worth of expenditures, perhaps. This is a picture of your... I think I've been there. This is a picture of your net position of your business-type activities. So we have, again, the top line shows our investment in capital assets. And the decline in the current year is the reclassification of the property that is being redeveloped, and I think it's 300-plus acres, that'll be sold off. And it was determined that that wasn't a capital asset. It was just reclassified as assets held for resale. So you typically sell it off in lots. And you see how the blue line came up and the red line came down? That's where that red line would have been over time without those investments in that land, which will be sold, not used as a capital asset. There's always pressure on the top line because we have depreciation expense, once again, that's pushing down. So if you don't put in, you know, new pipe in the ground and water sewer, in a given year, that line would decline. And over time, you can see it's fairly consistent, again, just as it was with your governmental activities. Then we have our unrestricted balance and then restricted balance. And the restricted balance are for donations, can be related to outstanding debt as well, but a very small component overall. Now, the last slides that we were looking at were your business-type activities, and those are presented on pages 42 through 53. Following those financial statements are the notes to the financial statements, talk about when there's an accounting option, which one do you choose, which policy are you following. Then we have non-major fund financial statements. So you can see the detail of each and every fund that you have, and the statistical section. Are there questions I could answer about the audit document or the audit process?
Commissioner Eke?
I have questions.
Yes?
Just for clarity, I'm assuming that you're telling us that the highest expenditure for us would be in public safety and general government?
Yes.
These two areas?
So when we were looking at just your general fund, the largest expenditures are public safety and general government.
Okay. And then I noticed that we've got a sort of dip in and rising and then dipping of the unrestricted funds, unrestricted section between 2015 and 2021?
I'm going to try to get to that slide. Is this what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's going on?
So what is occurring here is, pre-2015, approximately, governmental entities were not required to record a liability if their pension or their other post-employment benefit plan was underfunded. So an actuary says, you should have X amount of dollars today to pay everyone's benefits through earning today, and they compare that to the market value of the investments you hold. So approximately 2015, the new accounting standards required you to record a liability for the extent that your pension and your other post-employment benefit plans were underfunded. That forced... So first, the pensions were put on the books. Couple years later, then the other post-employment or health care for retirees were put on the books. That forced that number down. And then you see 2021 came up. That can be the result of how were the investments performing? 2022 wasn't a great year, but there was a very good year approximately at 2021.
Okay.
So we're comparing what needs to be set aside with what is the market value of these investments. So that can make a difference in that bottom line. Over time, your pension plan by default will be funded because you're amortizing any unfunded component over time. So you're basically increasing your contribution this year to make up for any under-contributing or poor investment performance. But that number can change based on the market value of investments that you're holding for your pensions and other post-employment benefit plans.
Okay. So, you have questions?
No, you keep going while you got questions.
No, you can go if you have questions.
Okay.
So I'm going to just simply ask some hypothetical questions later, just.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
I believe it is one or two slides from now. It was showing that one right there, yeah, general fund revenues. So obviously, taxes have had the largest increase out of all of these. Question, just working with other municipalities of our size or others, is that a similar trend or anything?
Yeah. So we work typically mid to the border of Michigan. So from here up to the, you know, up to the peninsula, all the way into the west. And what we're seeing is pretty substantial growth in the property tax value. It's not the tax rates typically.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So if you look in your report, in the back, in the statistical section, it shows you 10 years of rates for property taxes, and you can see there wasn't a change. It's the value. The values have... It's the housing market. So catching up with, you know, the assessors or catching up with the housing market, because there's always a slight lag. So... And also, within that number, is a consolidation of another fund within the general fund, a capital projects fund that was collecting taxes. And there's, I think it's $300,000 plus of medical or marijuana tax, I believe. So that's why that really popped. I think you would just see steady growth without it, but about 5% is what we're seeing.
Gotcha. So yeah, just summarizing, because I changed my understanding. It's more about the amount of revenue based on the value that we're...
Yeah, absolutely.
...of the property versus like, we increased our taxes a whole lot that year.
You did not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Does that number tend to drop if, for example, there's a housing market bus and values go back down again?
Sure.
Or is it one of those things where that takes a while to catch up, too?
Sure, sure. I think if we looked back with your financial information, I'm not sure there was ever actually a drop here. I think it was not much growth, but if we went back, you know, five more years, not much growth here, but there wasn't a drop. A lot of our other clients had a drop. You just had a more durable base for the taxes, where we had a number of communities where that dropped quite substantially, just the nature of your community, I think. And I think, at that time, I believe we pointed out even that, you know, other people are seeing declines. You're holding steady, so you're doing well. You're not getting any growth. But now it's turned around, and you are getting the growth, which is capped.
Commissioner Eke?
Okay, so this is good. I'm glad that you've responded to my colleagues, because my question actually has to do with some of the things they've asked. So since you look at cities between here and... Where did you say? Further up north?
Well, we work with communities from Traverse City to South Haven to Mount Pleasant to that triangular area where there are cities.
All right. That means that you have comparative, you know, some comparative cities to us. So given what you're noticing in terms of revenue, as you said, is comparable to what you've observed in other areas, that we are pretty much tax-based, or at least heavily tax-based. Are you hearing what people are doing to diversify the sources of their revenues besides taxes? I know we're looking at, you know, we have marijuana business here, which of course, you know, then we get the taxes. But what other things... What other things do you hear people talk about?
So what you have here are, in the slides, you can see that that state shared revenue was a quite large component of your general fund operation. So that's sales tax, that's collected by the state and shared with you. But something that I don't see at a lot of my clients are redevelopment of property that's going to be put on the tax base. That's... You know, we have a number of city clients where they're built out. It's all the property you're going to develop. Maybe they would turn down something and put up another type of mall or strip mall or whatever it might be. But in your case, you actually have the ability to continue to grow your tax base because you have the land available. So that's also a positive. And I know in the past, you have redeveloped property, split it up, put residential housing there, and that supports your tax base. I mean, that's a great concept.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work that your management puts into the process. So we truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone will control that, right?
Yep.
I think that's Mary Ann or someone.
All right. Now we have a presentation on Drinking Water State Revolving Fund.
We're going to have Brian Van Zee, who is a representative from Fishback Engineering, come up. He's going to present the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund project that we want to submit, a total of just over $38 million in projects that would be significant upgrades and repairs to our water treatment plant. And so I think I've killed about enough time here, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thanks, everybody, for having me. I got Tim here to help out with, make sure we get you all the information you need. So this is really an update, a presentation to what we brought to... So this is really an update, a presentation to what we brought to you back in January, when we discussed that we were going to submit the project plan or develop project plan. So this slide here is really just kind of a quick overview, just refresher on what the Drinking Water DWSRF is. On the right, it's a, it's a, it's a state program to be able to get low-interest loans on public works projects and the possibility of grants and loan forgiveness. Your twenty-year loan right now is at 1.87%. Really, how they do it is because of those loans. They, you know, you still have to go out for a bond. You still have to go out and bond, but they make the terms so terrible, right, because of the loan interest that nobody wants to buy it with the government, so. It was echoing, that's why I walked away. The schedule on it, the project plan, we are in, we are in the process of developing project plan. We have a draft copy of it, well, pretty much completed, and the next date is you have a public hearing that needs to be set for May tenth. So some of the projects, as we've gone through the project plan, some of the projects that are included in it are out at the island, and I'll explain to you later what the island is. But there's a rainy well there that's your largest developed well, gets you the most amount of flow and best quality. And so we need to rehab that well and also all the electrical components of the well. At the water treatment plant, there's several pieces to that, and it's all, again, rehab portions. So there's parts to the treatment process. The roof needs replaced, again, electrical improvements. There's a raw water storage tank, so the raw water tank, that's untreated water. So it's water that's pumped up to the treatment plant, but yet hasn't gone through the process yet. And then there's also high-service pumps and a finished water tanks. Those are tanks after it's gone through the treatment process. The distribution system, we're looking at replacing all the water meters with AMI or smart meters. Valves throughout the system to help with reliability and isolating areas when you have a water main break. We're still in the process of locating and investigating, but we've got in here some lead service line replacements, if we find some, and an emergency connection to Union Township to keep pressures up in case you have one of those water main breaks or something like that. And then also a portable generator at the Broomfield well. So this is the island. It's exactly what it is. It's an island. You have creek and a river going around both sides of it, and I can't point on this, can I? So on the right-hand side of the island is your high-service pumps. Those are the main pumps that pump all the water out into the system. And then those two circles in the middle are your finished water tanks right now. And up on the top left is what they call the rainy well. That rainy well, picture a big, big circular kind of a manhole tank sitting down in the ground, and then it has these long lateral pipes, couple hundred feet each. I don't know the exact number, but I think around seven of those pipes that go out. And those pipes need cleaning, rehabbed, and replaced quite periodically to keep that well going. And again, that is your cleanest water, because it's very low in iron and biggest-producing well in the city. This island is in the floodway, so it's...
Would you say that again?
It's in the floodway, so it's susceptible to flooding.
Flooding.
Yep.
Okay.
And it makes it so that any major improvements are very hard to permit with the state. So if these tanks need replaced, it's pretty, you probably would not be able to get that permitted to replace them on the island, so.
And the project moves the tanks elsewhere, from the island?
Right, so that's the plan, is to build tanks away from the island in preparation for, because these tanks are starting to need work.
Okay.
So, I didn't even read that, did I go through all that? Okay. All right, so this is the water treatment plant. The two big long tanks you see are tanks for lime, lime disposal. They treat the water, and any sludge that comes off from that goes into those. And it's held until they get full, and then you periodically have to have those basins cleaned out and hauled away. The building is the water treatment plant, and then back in the back corner, that pond is for backwash on the treatment processes, so the backwash water gets pushed out there. The water treatment plant was built thirty years ago. It's still a really good plant, really functioning great, but it is at its useful life of thirty years. Not the structure so much, but all the equipment and parts and pieces inside. So we're at that point where now it's, needs to have some improvements done to it. The clarifier inside, that needs all the valves replaced for the piping that goes to and from the clarifiers. There's some filters in there, think of like a big fish tank filter. The media in that needs cleaned out and replaced with new media. There's a recarb tank, the top of it's starting to rust, so it actually needs to be cut off and replaced, and then the whole thing recoded. The aeration tower is the same way. All the media inside of it needs replaced and the whole thing coated. And then the chemical tanks, these are big fiberglass tanks that hold your chemical for what, you know, for what you need to do, you know, chlorine or dechlorinate, and they have a useful life of thirty years, and they have failed and been repaired. The only way to, only way to replace these tanks is to take the roof off the building and then replace the tanks, put the roof back in. So the roof had been planned to be replaced, but we held off and said, let's put these tanks in the project. So lime sludge improvements, currently, like I was just explaining, those big lagoons, you periodically pay to have those lagoons cleaned out and hauled away. The cost just keeps increasing and increasing. So this was looking at different ways to try to get rid of that sludge. And the proposed way we're looking at is actually buy your own equipment, and the staff would haul it and put it on the fields. The generator at the water plant needs replaced and some electrical improvements. The SCADA system, which that's kind of a computer-based system that operates and monitors all processes going on, the hardware and software where that needs to be replaced. The boilers are failing and need replaced, and there's a huge dehumidifier in the building that has failed. Can't get technicians to come up and replace it, and they can't find parts for it.
Wait. Say that again?
A big dehumidifier in the building? Because with all the treatment processes in there, it's a lot of water, so there's moisture and everything that gets in there, so it's gotta be constantly dehumidified. And the unit that's in there, it's hard to find parts for it, hard to find service for it, and it's very costly.
Is it working now or not working?
It is functioning at this time. It was fairly expensive to have it repaired last time, so it is getting on in age, and we're kind of continually working on it. Just recently, they had to put new starters in it and a new motor on it, and it's just kind of a constant make and break kind of situation at this point.
So what do you think is the current timeframe before it just simply? One year, six months, three months?
As long as we can get parts for it, we can keep it running. It's more about the cost of keeping it running than anything. Don't hold me exactly to this number, but last time we had somebody come up, they come from a well out of state, and if I recall correctly, it was around five thousand dollars just to have them come up and work on it, and the parts are just very expensive for it.
Okay, so let's say hypothetically it stops working tomorrow. What's your backup?
We will figure out what it takes to keep it running. If we have to go to a bank help, we would probably go out and rent dehumidifiers to place in the basement of the plant to keep the humidity down.
Okay.
Kind of put that in perspective, the clarifiers that we use to remove hardness stand up very tall inside the plant. I would guess they're probably close to fifty feet.
Yeah.
So the sides of those are constantly full of fifty-two-degree water approximately, so you have these huge surface areas that are constantly cold, so any air that's traveling in and out of the plant that's moist, in the winter it's not so bad, but in the summer, if the dehumidifier is not running, it just rains inside that building, so all of your electrical components, all of your painted surfaces, all your conduit, everything that you use to run the plant becomes subject to those moisture loads, and it's really tough on equipment.
So what I'm hearing from you is that for us right now, this is priority one?
It is certainly...
Close enough.
In our radar, close, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Bush?
Two things. First of all, in regards to this, I was looking at the last presentation. I was surprised the, how low Public Works ranked in terms of our city's expenditures. It was just kind of an offside, but also I know that the general concepts with these systems, they haven't really changed a whole lot over, like, the last fifty years, right? Or is there, or is this the type of industry where here and there, like, I mean, the concept's there, but how often do, I mean, it's not like a, like when we replace our cell phones, it seems like they're always doing something new or whatever. It's not like that type of technology, but, but it's the, it's a matter of the durability of the thirty years, yeah.
Yeah, the technology really hasn't, there hasn't been major changes in technology. It's more what the equipment is in there. It's like your refrigerator, you know, it has a lifespan.
Yeah, or car combustion, yeah. Okay, all right, cool. I just kind of want to understand the type of equipment and technology, like, yeah.
Yep.
If you can imagine the computers you were using fifteen years ago, we're still using that same software.
Right, right. AS400 or something?
Right.
Clunky gateway.
So going into just a couple of the projects a little deeper, that raw water storage tank we were talking about, having that raw water storage tank would help you maximize and utilize that rainy well a little more, the best quality water. You can pump to that tank during the day, fill it up, and then possibly eliminate one of these shifts later in the day and allow the plant to run off from that raw water tank rather than having to constantly man that. The finished water tanks we talked about, I kind of explained this before, is that your current high-service pumps, the ones that pumped into distribution system, are down on that island, and it's in a floodway. The need to rebuild these reservoirs is that they're, the tanks themselves are getting cracks in them, the roof needs replaced, the pumps are past their useful life and need to be rebuilt, and a lot of them, same with all the electrical. And either you're putting money down there to rehab it, or you're taking care of this future problem of when it needs to be completely built that you wouldn't be able to, so.
Okay, I've got a question.
Okay.
So you said the, the, what is it, the reservoirs in the island in the floodway, some of them are getting some cracks, them?
Yep, yep.
How seriously?
Because they're concrete tanks, and concrete's constantly shifting and moving, and there are some small cracks. I don't think it's been really determined how much, but...
No, they found them at the end of a prior inspection.
Yeah.
And so we know that because water was able to enter the tanks.
I was gonna ask that, how, you know, should we worry about water seeping into the tanks?
As long as they're full, you've got enough hydrostatic pressure on the tanks to continue the flow of water out of the tanks. Now, it's not an excessive amount, or we would see it, but the fact that you've got those kind of perforations starting to occur in the cement would suggest that it's, it's time to do something with it. Now, we've got that in the capital improvements project, but the question is, do we start sinking money into those repairs, or do we look forward a little bit and say, hey, before we start bundling this money into that, maybe we should consider...
Another place.
...where it's gonna go someday anyway.
Okay, okay. So we're looking at another priority area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So this, this drawing here just kind of can draw, we're gonna, this drawing here does show kind of the locations that we were thinking for that raw water tank and the finished water tank. That's why they're location A and location B up there, out at the water treatment plant site, so.
You're sure that area is not going to flood in ten years? Mount Pleasant just flooded a few years ago, and it's still flooding in some places.
This, these elevations, this plan is well above the hundred-year flood elevation.
Okay, I feel better.
The projects in the distribution system, looking at replacing all of the water meters in the distribution system with the new smart AMI meters. Currently, there's five different kinds of meters within the city, and that makes it difficult to keep the parts on shelf, items like that. The technology of them is becoming obsolete. With the smart meters, it also eliminates that meter reader that's gotta drive around in the car and constantly, you know, read the meters for the billing, because it will report right back to the office for the billing. And also another benefit of the AMI is that customers can log right on the website and kind of track and monitor and do data analysis and everything on their own water usage, so. The distribution system valves, like I explained, they're critical for if you have a water main break, being able to shut down the area where that break is at. The valves are old, a lot of them are broken right now, so you can't do that, and need to be replaced. The emergency connection to Union Township, that is, in case of an emergency, you can, you know, turn, open the valve, and Union Township will help feed the city to keep the pressures up. So it's a reliability concern. The portable generator out at the well field and lead service line replacements, so. So into the big topic, what everybody wants to know. So the work at the water treatment plant that we described is just shy of eleven million Things are not getting cheaper. A new water plant right now, like what you currently have, would be up between thirty to forty million to rebuild that. The lime sludge, and this is capital cost for buying the equipment, you know, the tractors and the trailers and stuff, so that you can land apply that yourself, that's just shy of two million. Lead service lines, we have, we have budgeted and estimated for three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. That's, a lead service line is roughly about ten thousand per house is what that is. So we have bundled that into one year, 2024. The total of that is thirteen-point-five million. That doesn't take care of all the projects, but the project plan, the idea is you put all of the projects in there, and the project plan is good for five years, and then the state looks at it for funding each year, right? So this, they would only be looking at year one, but then down the road, when you wanted to submit, if it was next year or the year after, you don't have to go through the whole project plan process again. It's in there and you just say, hey, we've got these projects, we'd like to submit them now. So the work at the island we described is four million, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, the high-service pumps and the finished water tanks, to move those up to the plant, and that's right around nine million. That raw water tank is right around five-point-two, and the work in the distribution system is five-point-two. So after year one, the remaining work is estimated at twenty-four-point-five. When we came to you back in January... When we came to you back in January, um, the city had submitted an ITA, that's an intent to apply to the state. On the intent to apply, um, was the projects listed here, and the total on that was eleven million. Um, after we started the project plan, uh, we, in, we went and did an inspection of the plant, we looked through some of the old inspection reports from the state, you know, the sanitary study, the water reliability study, um, and found, um, several more items to that. So there's been, if you look over in the DWSRF, that's what's right now in the project plan. Um, some of the big ones that are added is that high-service pump and the finished water tanks. Um, the chemical tanks in the building were not in the, in the ITA. Um, but again, you want to do those before you replace the building, or the roof on the building, um, because otherwise you have to tear it block off, and the roof is currently leaking, so, um, so there's several little items, you know, that were added after going through the inspection and reading the state reports and stuff like that that got added. Uh, the lead service lines were not in there, things like that, and that's how we came up to that thirty-eight point four million number, so. The city, um, with the scoring, the city does qualify as an overburdened community, which will help with the lower interest loans, and it qualifies you for more grants and principal forgiveness on the loan.
Explain, what does that mean?
So, if you apply for, say.
Does that mean we are poor? Just putting it in my, you know, in my, layperson's language, we are just really, like, offens, right?
It, it, yes, correct. It, uh, they go by your, um, your household income, the average household income compared to the state, and they go by your taxable values. And with that calculation, and then also your debt ratio, and with that calculation, they come up with a scoring, and with, with the scoring, the city did come in over, under, overburdened. Now, there's another level, significantly overburdened, you didn't qualify for that, so.
We qualified for that also?
No, you did not qualify for that, so.
So at least we got that going for us.
That's not good, but anyway, well, but it will get us some consideration.
Yep, it moves you up on the list when they're scoring and trying to figure out how they're gonna distribute this money.
Okay.
Yep. So, move back to there and answer any other follow-up questions you guys have.
Yeah, so, um.
Commissioner, card.
Oh, sorry, I should have waited. Um, just kind of question, as you're looking at, um, the ITA versus, um, the proposed project, um, a lot, a lot of different items have been added to the proposed project, um, kind of thought processes that are getting added on there. I know like the one, it was the water tanks in the treatment facility is, they should be replaced because otherwise we're gonna have to re-replace the roof anyway. So for example, that was kind of just a logical order of operations, but when you're, like, we, we paid you to give us an assessment and everything, so when you guys come in, it's looking at like, these things need to be replaced, like this, like, this is what needs to be done now, like, kind of, can you just talk to a bit about your philosophy as you're like deciding what should and shouldn't be on the list?
So, when we went through the water plant, we had, um, a group of people go through, investigate, and look at the electrical, look at, uh, the condition of the equipment, um, like the valves, um, look through, see what the condition of the valves are, the tank, investigated that rust, you know, things like that. Um, and then put, also, uh, compared it to those state evaluations. And the state evaluations, they go through once a year, and they will list on there things that you need to replace. Water meters, all the meters and the pipes that measure how much flow is coming into the plant and going out, those are required code for through the state, and they need to be replaced, and that was on the, on the survey from the state. The lime, um, we really looked at that, um, teamed with the city. We went through several different options of lime. Um, they worked with the city on the self-apply, right? Buying the equipment, applying it yourself. We looked at, um, d- d- dewatering, trying to dry that lime out more so it didn't dry it, um, way as much. That way you're not paying so much to get rid of it. Things like that, and came up with which one was the most cost-effective. Um, the electrical is really all age, right? I mean, electrical, it's thirty years old, um, and it's, at thirty years old, it's pretty well shot.
Gotcha.
The generator at the plant, um, that is not sized to completely run the entire facility. So that's age and the size of the unit really determine that, that that one needs to be replaced, so. Um, the high-service pumps, we explained that, you know, that's really, it's in the floodway, so do you want to spend a bunch of money down, down there now? And then continuously do that, cause it's, you know, you're gonna, you're just repairing it, putting the band-aid on, or do you want to look at, you know, let's look out a little farther and see which one's the smarter idea?
Gotcha. The other question for me, um, again, for, uh, just going over again how the, um, state revolving fund works, um, so again, it's, um, low-interest loans for municipalities to be able to take out and like do large proj- projects such as this. Um, the reimburse, the possibility of like reimbursement or principal forgiveness that had been discussed, that would be, can you explain how that would function again? Just because I'm pretty sure I understand it, but I couldn't communicate it back to somebody else, so that's the way, it was just like repetition for me, I kind of need that.
All right. Yeah, so there, there's two options, or two availability of more money with this SRF, right? The grants, if you get grants, uh, they'll get those to you right upfront, right when you get it. Uh, the principal forgiveness, uh, you still have to go out and bond for that money, and then at the end of the closeout with the state, so that'd be when the project is completed, then they will pay that money back to you, is what it is. So you have to bond for it, but then it comes back at the end.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Hi. Did anybody else have questions? Spacebar, Hallsecker?
Yeah, go.
Yeah, I had a question, um, concerning the interconnect that you mentioned between Mount Pleasant and Union Township being beneficial to us, does it go the reverse way too? That it would be beneficial to them if they had a failure?
It, it does, this is kind of step one of it. Um, so it, it would help them out in the same means as it would help the city, um, but they are at a higher elevation, so it wouldn't help as much until you did phase two. Phase two, um, sometime down the road, you would need to put a booster station out there to help pump it to them, is what you'd have to do, so.
Hmm, hmm, okay.
For sure, okay.
Okay, so I am looking at how much, you know, the increase is from, um, what was submitted in the, under the intent to apply, you know, section, and what looks like what we have to do. Um, but it all, you know, it seems to me that everything under this second, you know, the actual projected section seems necessary right now, cause I'm thinking water security, water safety, and at the back of my consciousness is flint, water crisis, you know, now that we're going to go get water from some other river, but water crisis is water crisis regardless. And given everything that you're saying to me right now, it looks like we don't have an option of removing anything off this list. Am I hearing that from you?
Everything on here needs to be done.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
But, yeah, but there is, like I said, the project plan is good for five years, so you don't have to do it all in one year or two years. You've got, you'd split it up like we showed here, um, we, this is an example for two years.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, after you get through year one, you can reevaluate the order that you want to do.
Okay, so now I'm coming to that. So, um, twenty twenty-four, you have, can you go back to, yes?
Yep.
And then twenty twenty-five, you have the island and all of that. Why didn't you flip those two?
Um.
What's your rationale?
The water treatment plant, uh, the equipment at the plant, getting that back up to functioning the way it should be. Um, those filters, you know, the, the aerator, uh, the roof's leaking, um, that kind of stuff, that is really the main, um, brain of the entire water system, right, is the water plant?
Mm-huh, mm-huh.
So getting that back up and, it's back up to what it was supposed to be.
Okay, but the island is also under threat, from what I'm hearing from you?
Yes.
Is it possible to do those simultaneously?
It is, um, it's just.
I mean, you're saying to me, the, you know, that the reservoirs are cracked, or that they're cracking, and there might be seepage right now, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, should I start boiling my water? Listen, I am not, and again, no, okay, I, okay, 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 I'm just, okay, listen, I, I'm thinking, what a security, what a safety, right?
Yep.
So, I, I, I grew up in a place where things like this can happen, and then you start boiling your water, okay? And I do research in places like that, so I want you to understand my concern, right? That it may be what happened today, that's why I'm asking you these questions. Okay, so, um, is it possible to do those two simultaneously or in tandem?
It, it is possible, it would make your year one a little more expensive, but it's, um, it's a balancing, balancing act with the way that the state scores it too, right? So they, they score each piece out of a hundred points, they score each thing a little bit different. Um, like if we had just the distribution system on a year all by itself, you'd get really no points for that year.
Okay, so what is determining what, what we're putting forward right now is the state's scoring?
Yep.
I didn't, that wasn't clear to me initially. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions?
Why is it called a rainy well? Like, is, is that, like, just a technical term?
Or ran after, named after somebody or something?
Yeah.
Oh.
Wait, really?
Yeah.
I thought it's named after someone, I don't know, you know, like, the history of things.
It, it is a pretty unique, pretty neat well, you don't see them very often, and like I said, the water quality that comes out of it is the best, it's very low iron, so it is a, it, it is an asset that you want to try to protect and maintain, so.
So you are going to move the well itself?
No, the.
No, you're going to construct another one that looks like it?
I'll go back to that picture. There we go.
So what exactly are you going to do when you move it to the upland?
So this is the rainy well up here that I'm circling.
Mm-huh.
That will stay.
Okay.
That stays on the island, and we would re- re- rehab it, make sure that it's back up to production and functioning well.
All right.
Um.
But then what's going to the upland?
First or go. So the, what would be moved is this over here is your high-service pump building.
I see.
That building has the pumps in it that pump all the water out to the distribution, and then these tanks are the ones that we're talking about, uh, that are the finished water tanks that would be moved up also. So anything that's a well would stay out here on the island.
Okay, okay.
Um, I do have one more question. Um, we were talking about for using the, like, utilization of the island, um, it's our best, best water source in the community, um, it sounds like we would be increasing like our utilization of its, um, longevity of like the, of that area and that well, um, does that change anything for that? It's like, is it, would we be overdrawing on the, upon that well? Like, would we be placing like an undue burden to overdraw upon the well? Like, is that relevant to this discussion?
No, that, you wouldn't be overdrawn with the rivers that go around it, you're constantly, that is a constant feeding to it.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Ooh. Okay.
Yes, manager.
So what is it that you expect from us then? Sorry. What are you asking?
Just giving you an update, um, showing you where we're at, uh, the cost and what projects we found. We don't, we're not asking, we'll, we have a public hearing coming up that will, um, that we'll have to vote on.
Okay, that's good.
And that's the tenth?
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds.
Yeah.
Yes, twenty seconds, yeah.
Manager, it is.
Yeah, thank you. If I can, uh, I'll just talk a little bit about some of the process as well, too. So we met last week and talked about these projects, and, and we really went through this in a couple of meetings, just going through, what are the other options that we have here as well, too? Uh, one of the things I chanced the team on is, is just future automation, what's a, a way of automating the future and, and becoming more of an automated pro, or of an automated process? We had talked about that. That kind of became a hard stop, though, when I realized it's about fifty million for a plant that would be much more fully automated than what we have, so take the ten million dollars, drop in fifty in that instead, now you're adding forty to the project. Probably doesn't make sense for where we're at, especially given the thirty-eight million dollar price tag, which is significant. Now, we started talking about theory of, well, a couple of different ways of doing this. Do we do what we've done for a number of years here and just do more pay-go, where we would have to increase rates to afford ultimately thirty-eight million dollars, but maybe we stretch that out? Maybe we stretch these projects out by five years, ten years? During the conversation, we said, look, these projects really couldn't get stretched out past a ten-year mark or anything like that, so you're really stretching at ten. You could do it that way, but then your projects are also subject to inflation year after year, whereas thirty-eight million dollars is, that's a net present cost, that's if we do this in the next couple of years, so that offsets against future inflation. Uh, and then the driving point to this program as well, too, as Brian had discussed, is the state principal forgiveness. Uh, if you recall, the Clean Water, uh, State Revolving Fund that we are in for our water resource recovery project for phase two, it was an eighteen million dollar deal, but half of that, nine million of that, was principal forgiveness, so that made it much more, um, uh, cost advantage advantageous to us. And so that's really the driving thought here, is if we're gonna go out for thirty-eight million, if we could get fifty percent forgiveness, well, that becomes, that's great, right? We've just brought millions of dollars into the community that we would not otherwise have, and that we would just have to pay for with revenues ourselves. Um, and, and to talk about that thirty-eight million as well, too, I know I talked with, uh, Assistant Finance Director Saladin, just about what does this mean to the average resident? Even if we had to fund the full thirty-eight million dollars, but we did it as a thirty-year deal, this would increase the average customer's water bill by ten dollars per month, and that's it. That's at full, and so if you say, all right, well, maybe we get fifty percent forgiveness, well, okay, now it's only five dollars per month. So we looked at the, the cost and the affordability as well, too, we determined this really is the best route to go, so. Uh, in terms of what we're, we're doing tonight, just want to have the presentation of the city commission, so everyone can ask the questions about the, the project on our consent agenda this evening. Um, hoping the city commission would approve setting a public hearing to get public comment on the proposal, that would be at our next city commission meeting, and then from there, we would essentially, uh, authorize a resolution to, uh, submit this as the final project plan to the state.
Yep. Also, one thing I'd like to add after, um, Erin talked here, is that he talked about the principal forgiveness, um, all the extra infrastructure money that governments put in, it all went into this SRF program. They, we're on year two of that, this will be year two of that money, and they spread it out over five years, so really you have four years left of that additional infrastructure money they put out, and then, we don't know what's gonna happen, but I, I'm assuming there's probably gonna be a stale, um, for a while, right? So.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you for having me.
All right, we're gonna move on to additions and deletions to the agenda, does anybody have an addition or deletion to the agenda?
All right. We do need to add swearing in of Commissioner Brian Chapman, who just recently won an election by a landslide, I might add.
Yes. All right.
That's right.
I'm going to suggest that we add that in as number five, so we'll do it immediately after we approve the agenda with the new, um, with the addition. Are there any other additions or deletions? I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda with the addition.
I move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, at this time, we are moving on to number five, which is the swearing in of Commissioner Chapman.
We don't have our photographer.
Oh, darn.
No, we even have a photographer, it's nice. Okay, if you'll raise your right hand, I, and then repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will.
I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will.
Support the constitutions of the United States of America.
Support the constitutions of the United States of America.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
On behalf of all the citizens of the city to the best of my ability.
On behalf of all the citizens of this city to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. So we are going to move on to public input on agenda items. If you are in our audience and you are part of the public and you would like to speak on um, anything that is on the agenda, you may come up to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the star nine feature. If you're joining Zoom by phone, otherwise the raised hand feature. If you want to state anything on the agenda, they will let you in. You'll be asked for your name and, um, address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom with me.
I do not see anyone in the public at this time. Are there any emails? All right. I'm going to close the public input on agenda items and we're going to move to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager, does sense?
Receipt of petitions and communications includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Economic Development Corporation from November, minutes of the Downtown Development Authority from February, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board, March, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four Planning Commission Work Session Schedule, Notice of Temporary Traffic Control Order Number Four Dash Twenty Twenty Three, the twenty twenty two Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the twenty twenty two Component Unit Financial Reports.
All right. At this time, we will move on to the consent items. Are there any items in the consent calendar that need to be moved into the regular meeting? If none seen, manager does sense?
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held April twenty four, twenty twenty three. Consider approval of a contract with CNI Building Maintenance for Roof Restoration, Section Six and Seven, on the Public Safety Building and approved payment for supplies through Tremco Manufacturing for a combined total of sixty seven thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and forty cents. Consider approval of a contract with Rocky Ridge Development LLC for lime residual removal for four hundred twenty nine thousand dollars. Consider contract extension with Vredenfeld Hefner for audit services for twenty one thousand, five hundred dollars and optional services if needed. Receive proposed amendment to Chapter Thirty Nine, Human Rights of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances and set a public hearing for May twenty second, twenty twenty three on the same. Consider setting a public hearing for May twenty second, twenty twenty three for public comment on the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Final Project Plan for Water Treatment Plant Improvements. Consider updated resolution for Development District License for China Master Restaurant, Inc. and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
One second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Um, roll call vote? No?
No.
Are you sure? Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Oh, okay. We do not have any public hearings today, so we are going to move on to item number twenty two, new business. Consider whether a public hearing to adjust the twenty twenty three millage rate should be held. Manager does sense?
Absolutely. So on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, the city commission approved our twenty twenty three operating budget and also approved the total city millage rate of sixteen point two five mils. As you heard during the presentation of the audit this evening, the city has started fiscal year twenty twenty three in a strong position. We have thirty percent fund balance within the general fund. We've also seen an increase in property sales and inflation, which has resulted in a nearly five percent increase in anticipated property tax revenue for twenty twenty three. The city commission reserves the right every year to review the rates each spring and consider if adjustments based on changed conditions need to take place related to our tax millage. Staff is recommending that the millage rate remain at the sixteen point two five mils for twenty twenty three, given the current financial conditions of the city.
Mm-hmm. Are there any, um, questions or concerns? All right, I will take a motion and then we will have a discussion.
I'll move.
Are you looking at moving to have a public hearing to adjust the rates?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we will have a discussion.
Isn't the recommendation to not have a public hearing?
No, it's not.
To not raise the rates.
And to not raise the rates. So, so, what's that?
Not to raise the rates.
No, 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 a public hearing would set it to raise the, to have a public hearing to raise the rates. So I would, I would motion to do the opposite of what you motioned to do. Because what you motioned to do is to go against the recommendation of this, the staff.
Yeah, you said to have a public hearing, so most of us are going to vote against it.
Yes.
Oh, no, 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 I'm going with the recommendation of the staff.
Okay, so there's a recommendation to not raise the rates?
Yes.
For no need for a public hearing?
That's my position, yes.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I thought that's what I was supporting. Okay.
All right, is there discussion?
Drawing my attention to that, because I thought that's what I was supporting.
With the rewording of the motion, I will be supporting it.
Yeah.
All right.
To not have a, a public hearing, maintaining the current mill rate?
Yes.
My motion is to go with the recommendation of the staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All right, we will go to a vote. Those in favor of not having a public hearing to adjust the millage rate and to hold the, um, rate at sixteen point two five mils, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. Now, we're going to move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Does anybody have anything to discuss today or to announce? Vice Mayor?
I, I have just one item. Um, there has been some advertising about these meetings, but I wanted us all to be aware of them that, um, right in these chambers on both Wednesday and Thursday, there were, there's going to be a meeting about solar, um, development, solar town hall meetings. Um, it's Wednesday evening, seven to nine P M, and Thursday morning, eleven A M to one P M. You don't need to go to both, you can go to one or the other.
Is there any other announcements?
Um, I got two things. Um, one, I just wanted to ask, um, if we could get an update on the community garden and orchard project.
Yeah, absolutely. So staff has put in orders for the supplies for that project. We anticipate having that in and, uh, constructed for a opening, uh, Memorial Weekend.
Memorial Weekend?
Do we know the sign up?
Do we know when the forms are going to be available?
Uh, we do not yet. Uh, we will, as soon as we have that put together, we will definitely put that out to the community.
It's not gonna be.
It's, it's really, really soon.
So don't buy your seeds yet.
Gotcha.
One of, yeah, just one of the concerns is the, um, the goal is to open by Memorial Weekend. Somewhat concerned if we were to sell people on the idea that we're open by Memorial Weekend, you know, take the registration and everything and, and, and it's not that. So we're hoping to have a, a, a firmer schedule out this week here, so that way, we just don't want to not deliver on our promises is mostly it.
I, I, I understand, um, if we're, if the goal is to open by Memorial Weekend, I am assuming that the registration forms would be available before Memorial Weekend?
Yes.
So should we assume maybe next meeting? Memorial Weekend is about three weeks from now. So do you anticipate having those forms available? Because people are asking me and I'm asking, you know, do, do you anticipate having those forms available by our next meeting?
I thi, yes, I, I think definitely by next meeting.
Okay, I will be careful about what I tell people. Okay, i- is it possible to ask? It's, it's, um, you know, one of the items on a, um, that we have. It's the human rights, actually the human rights ordinance. Is it okay to ask?
Can, can we give, um, Commissioner Windguard his second?
I just want more. Um, I just wanted to say, um, really cool thing I learned today. Um, the Kentucky Derby was on Saturday and a native of Ma, of Mount Pleasant finished second writing two fills. It was Jareth Loveberry. He was a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School in two thousand and five. So just kind of a cool shout out to him. Um, I was rooting for him, um, and I think he did a great job, so thank you.
Didn't watch that.
Okay, Commissioner Eke?
Okay, so, um, I, I want to say, I want to commend, uh, city manager and staff for working on, um, the human rights ordinance, because it's in keeping with, you know, the issues that, um, you know, most of you know I'm interested in, that I work on, but it also aligns us with, you know, my questions about diversity and inclusion and, you know, all of those, um, areas of concern. So I'm really, really happy about this. I'm proud of what you've done here. Um, I do have a couple of recommendations. Maybe I should just talk to you about that. Okay, just sort of a few things to tweak, to, to add to that. Is that acceptable to you? Okay, because then I don't have to mention them here. But I, I hope that, you know, when this comes up, that we support this. Um, a lot of cities, I know that a lot of cities have human rights ordinances. Um, there is a county human rights committee. I hope you know about them. And this would be, uh, in keeping with the Civil Rights Act, you know, passages of civil rights, uh, proclamations that the city, you know, um, has made in the past. And, you know, there's one today, uh, for Pride Month, you know? So, um, and I think it, it, it also places a city, not necessarily at the cutting edge, but in alignment with, you know, what is happening globally, what is happening around the world. As human rights are being challenged everywhere, human rights, civil rights are being challenged everywhere. So I am happy and I'm proud and I will be brave to say that a city of Mount Pleasant is, you know, one of those places that looks out for people's, you know, human rights and, you know, preservation of human dignity and, you know, rights for, for all people. So I just want to say thank you. I will, you know, um, give you some of the ideas that I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, we're going to move on to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. At this time, if there is anyone in the public that wishes to speak on something that was on the agenda or something that's not on the agenda, you may step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be brought into the meeting and you will be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anybody in Zoom that wishes to speak?
No, there's not.
Are there any emails that we've received on non-agenda items?
No, there's not.
Okay, not seeing anyone in the audience. We are going to close the agenda and non-agenda items public comment. And I'm going to ask the commission if they would like to go to recess or if they'd like to go right into work session.
Work session.
Let's do work session.
All right, then we are going to forego the recess and move right into the work session, which is a presentation and discussion on the twenty twenty nine, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine capital improvement plan.
Why the Assistant Finance Director sets up the presentation here, I'll just go ahead and tee him up. So if you recall, at our last city commission work session, staff provided, uh, background information on the development of the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine Capital Improvements Plan. City commission offered insight on, uh, into the plan. And especially, we talked quite a bit about the expense or the allocation of one point three million dollars in ARPA funding that had been, uh, not allocated up until that point. About three quarters of a million of it had been allocated towards the reconstruction of Parking Lot Three and about five hundred thousand dollars and change allocated to the Mid Michigan G K B pathway extension as well, too. That left about one point three million, um, unallocated at that point. City commission had offered their opinion on utilizing four hundred thousand roughly to turn the Parking Lot Three reconstruction into part of the Town Center project. Um, and then also allowing the other roughly nine hundred thousand dollars to be allocated either towards a future trail extension or towards another project into the future. Uh, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Assistant Finance Director Chris Saladin. He's going to just, again, cover some of the math there that I might have been a little bit loose on and then also provide the city commission opportunity to weigh in, uh, again, on the capital improvement plan ahead of our public hearing at our next meeting.
Thank you. Um, so just as, uh, City Manager Dissents indicated, this slide right here shows after the city commission had discussion and tentatively agreed with, uh, how they wanted to use the ARPA funds. Um, it is possible, especially maybe for, um, Lot Three Town Center, there might be some other grant funding available. If that happens, then the plan would be to sort of move on down the list to, um, we actually do have on the South Trail, um, where it says nine hundred and thirty five, that was like a one point eight million dollar project and, uh, our park director indicated we could probably get around four hundred thousand dollars in grants, so we'll have a little bit more that we need to put into the South Trail. So, um, that's just sort of the plan is to start with Town Center, the North Trail, and then just work our way through the projects with the remaining ARPA dollars. And so beyond that, I just wanted to open it up to see if, um, after our discussion last, uh, city commission meeting, if there were any additional questions that, that I could answer for commissioners.
Anybody have any questions?
I think we had a very, very thorough discussion, I think.
Yeah, I did, yeah. I'm happy.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it?
That's it.
You mean you're gonna wait?
Thank you for hanging around.
We appreciate all your time.
Come back anytime.
Yeah. All right. So at this time, we are done with our work session. It is eight twenty six. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second, yes? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? We are adjourned, eight twenty six.
Thank you.